Okay, I'll call this meeting to order. Our invocation today is being given by Pastor Bill Lassasso from New Path Community Church in Laillman. Please stand and remain standing for the pleasure of allegiance by Commissioner Peters.
Father, thank you for this amazing county in which we live. It's beautiful, it's everything good, but it's a whole lot of work. And what we're asking today is you would give these commissioners wisdom beyond anything, and peace, and have a great meeting. You know, God, what we'd like is that we could say at the end of this day that our county was in better shape after this meeting than it was before. You can help us do it, and we're asking, in Jesus' name, amen.
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 I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, united, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, I feel like I'm in a war just like you're not. Throwback, wow.
Watch out behind you. Watch out behind you.
Okay, I'm gonna pull my chair in. Thank you, our readers. Come on. There it goes. It is perfect. I'd like to ask our friend from the Tampa Bay Times, Jody Pushton. She's the manager of the Newspapers and Education Program, and we're gonna, we have a proclamation here. Thanks for being here. Right, Newspaper and Education Week is an initiative of the American Press Institute, which recognized the accomplishments of newspaper and education programs around the country and around the world. It is an international program that encourages the use of the daily newspaper as a living textbook for students from primary grades through adult education levels. Research tells us that the best way to teach children, to help children discover the joy of reading, because my eyes aren't as good as I thought, and become lifelong readers is to involve them early and often. Students who learn using the newspapers as an educational resource are more likely to become lasting readers and informed and engaged citizens. Helping a child to learn to love reading improves their chances for success in school and beyond. The Tampa Bay Times Newspaper and Education Program has served Tampa Bay educators, students, and families by providing print and digital newspapers, award-winning education publications, teacher guides, lesson plans, educator workshops, and many more resources, all at no cost to teachers or families or schools. Tampa Bay Times for more than 40 years has participated in newspapers and education. In 2018-19, the Times has served 565 teachers, 140,659 students, and 170 schools in Pinellas County. Now therefore be proclaimed by the Pinellas County Board of County Commissioners that the week of March 2nd to 6th, 2020 be recognized as Newspaper and Education Week 2020. Thank you.
I know you've got something to say. I just want to thank you for your partnership and for the partnership with Pinellas County and Pinellas County Schools. I have the same numbers you do, so that's all I'm gonna say.
Well, that's probably where we got them, actually.
There you go.
Well, thank you so much for doing this for our school system. I do think it's important, and I think our daily newspaper is important. So please, support your daily newspaper. Yes, I do. And we have some. Come here.
Joe.
How are you?
Good.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll give you three counts. One, two, three.
And he will do it three times. One day he's gonna surprise me.
One, two, three.
Ah, he fooled you.
Oh, my God. Very, very nice.
And for our partner presentation, I'd like to call up Angeline Scoton, a biological scientist in the Division of Habitat and Species Conservation with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. Thank you so much for being here.
Thanks for helping me. Okay.
Well, good afternoon.
I'll go ahead and get started, just for the interest of time. My name is Angeline Scoton. I'm a wildlife biologist with the Florida Fish and Wildlife Conservation Commission. My job is to assist the public with conflict wildlife issues, and the number-one species I talk to the public about in Pinellas County today are coyotes. So I have a short presentation to give to you, real quickly, to go over some coyote information. I'll start by saying coyote management in urban ecosystems is a complex and complicated issue, one that I probably can't hit every topic on in the time allotted to me today. So I'm more than happy to come back and elaborate if needed at a later time. One of the top questions we get about coyotes is why are they in Florida? They didn't used to be here, and there's some truth in that. They have expanded their range naturally from the western U.S. to the eastern U.S. This map that I'm showing you now is a good graphic by decade, just how quickly they have been able to expand their range across the continent. You can find coyotes now in every state in the Union with the exception of Hawaii. This is partially due to a couple of reasons. One is our conversion to an agricultural landscape across the country. The second reason is demise of predators. The society, human society wiped out a lot of predators for coyotes in the last 100, 150 years, think wolves, bears, cougars, mountain lions. Without those predators in place, this also allowed coyotes to move from the western U.S. to the eastern U.S. I should point out that those same strategies that we used on wolves and bears and cougars were also done on coyotes. So they expanded their range while being heavily persecuted, which says a lot about their survivability and adaptability as a wildlife species in the area. For a little bit of biology about coyotes, the coyotes are omnivorous, which means they're gonna eat just about anything. So they do rely a lot on plant material, but they will also eat things like rabbits and rodents and squirrels. They'll also take advantage of human-related foods, like dog food, bird seed, garbage, roadkill, fallen fruit, whatever they can find. This is why they do so well in urban areas, because their diet is so eclectic and they can eat just about anything. They are highly adaptable. This is one of the most intelligent wildlife species that we have living in the area today. Adult coyotes are about the size of a mid-sized dog. They range in size from 25 to 40 pounds. In Florida, they're averaging about 27 pounds. Home range size is variable, depending on where you are in the state. So if you're, let's say, East Polk County, out in some ranch lands, they're gonna have a pretty large territory of about 15 square miles. But in an urban environment like Pinellas County, their territory gets really small. It's only about three square miles. The reason why it shrinks is because where there are humans, there's more food for coyotes. They don't need to patrol such a big area. They can find everything they need in a smaller space. So in urban areas, you potentially have denser coyote populations because their territory sizes are getting smaller with those human-related foods available to them. Coyotes mate in the winter, so we're in mating season right now. They have pups in the spring. Pups are, on average, about six pups in a litter, but this is dependent on food. The more food that's available to them, the more young they can support. So communities in Pinellas County can help with coyote reproduction by controlling their food. Human-related foods have high calories. That means coyotes can support more offspring. If they're not getting these human-related foods, they can't support as many offspring. Additionally, coyotes are monogamous. They mate for life. This is very unlike domestic dogs. Domestic dogs have no pair bonds with each other, but coyotes do. They have very strong pair bonds. The male is involved raising his offspring, and that male and female make a commitment to raise their young together, and they remain monogamous in the territory throughout their lives, which is pretty interesting for a canine species. The number-one issue we have with coyotes in Pinellas County and most urban areas in the state is the fact that coyotes are urban and that there is pet loss associated with coyotes. It is no secret coyotes are really good, unfortunately, at taking people's pets when they're free-ranging. This is primarily cats that are left outdoors to free-range. They are absolutely open to predation anytime they're free-ranging. And while coyotes get the most notoriety for taking pets, I do want to point out there are other wildlife species in the area that will also take pets, like bobcats, like alligators, like large raptors. So it's not just coyotes, even though they get the most notoriety for it. Small dogs are typically also taken by coyotes. However, this is when small dogs are typically not secure. And by secure, I mean they're not on a leash, they're not in a well-fenced yard, they're not outside with a person. And typically, when coyotes predate those dogs, it's a matter of opportunity. A little dog is outside by itself, it's not on a leash, it's not with somebody, coyote happens to be there, takes advantage of the opportunity. These are typically small dogs, by small I'm meaning under 20 pounds. We do have large dogs sometimes tangle with coyotes as well. These are typically large dogs that are off-leash, that are going up to a coyote's denning site that the coyotes are then defending. We also get a lot of questions about human safety, you know, are we safe around coyotes? And the answer to that is primarily yes. Coyote attacks on humans in this country are pretty rare. And to put it into perspective, I have a slide here showing you some statistics with dog attacks versus coyote attacks. So if we start with coyotes in this continent, in the U.S. and Canada, between 1970 and 2015, there's approximately nine attacks or bites by coyotes on people per year. This is typically someone who's doing something they shouldn't be doing, like getting between the coyote and its food, or trying to give the coyote some food, like hot dog or something. Or it's a victim of someone doing something they shouldn't have been doing. In that same timeframe, there have been two human fatalities caused by coyotes in the U.S. and Canada. Now, if you compare that to domestic dogs, there's more than 1,000 emergency room visits in this country every day from dog bites. There's more than 5 million cases a year that require medical treatment. And between 2013 and 2018, there were 217 recorded fatalities caused by domestic dogs in this country alone. So statistically, your chances of being bitten by a coyote, especially if you're doing all the right things, are fairly low. So what are the right things to do when coyotes are around? One is not to feed them. Anything that can attract a dog, a cat, or a raccoon can attract a coyote. So we're strongly encouraging residents to secure those food sources from coyotes and other wildlife, like garbage. Keeping garbage secure in a garage or a shed, somewhere where the wildlife and coyotes can't get to it is a great thing to start with. And additionally with garbage, try to put out on the morning of trash day instead of the night before. That'll give wildlife less opportunity to get into it. We also encourage cleaning up fallen fruit, pet food, and bird seed. These things are high in calories, and it really pulls coyotes into urban communities. We're also suggesting that residents keep cats indoors. This is really the only way to keep them safe, not just from coyotes, but from other wildlife predation and from other perils that face them when they're free-ranging outside. For small dogs, we suggest keeping them on short leashes, like a short six-foot leash, not one of those retractables where the little dog can get way far away from you, keeping them in a well-fenced yard, or supervised when they're outside. We also suggest to follow some hazing recommendations. This can be found on our website. Hazing is deterring coyotes, scaring them off, letting them know that they're not welcome in a community. And I'm gonna talk more about that here in just a moment. I wanted to bring you a local example today of a community that we've worked with here in Clearwater. This is the On Top of the World Retirement Community. We started hearing reports from them in 2018 that they had coyotes loafing on the golf courses, like sleeping in the sand traps. We had photos of them doing that, hanging out on the fairway, where we had reports of them attacking dogs. We consistently heard that they were not afraid of people. And in this photo in this slide, you can see a good example of that. We have golfers on the fairway here, we've got a coyote scratching himself not very far away, and nobody's really, nobody cares, and everybody's just kinda going along with their business. We did multiple site visits in this community with Pinellas County Animal Services, and what we found was there was an at-large dog in this community that the residents were feeding. So we had a feeding situation in here while the residents were trying to help the dog, and their heart was in the right place. They were also feeding the coyotes. We observed the dog and the coyotes moving across the apartment complex in the condos, approaching back doors, looking for food. So we had a feeding situation in here for sure. So what we did is we went into the community and we tested the coyotes. We kept hearing they weren't afraid of people. So what we did is we went and we hazed them to try to see what they would do, and they did the right thing. When they were approached by me personally and challenged, they yielded to me, which is exactly what they were supposed to do. So what we found is everybody was just really tolerant of each other. The coyote's really tolerant of the golfers and the residents, and the golfers and the residents really tolerant of the coyotes. We did two education campaigns in On Top of the World, teaching residents to secure attractants, to haze coyotes. We worked closely with the HOA Board to make signs. If you see on the slide there, there's a photo of a sign that we worked really closely with their HOA on, that's now, those signs are out, are out in the community. I'm happy to report that as of my last check-in with On Top of the World, they're having no further issues with coyotes in their neighborhood, but we're standing by and ready to assist if they have further issues arise. That is the end of my very short presentation. Thank you very much. We'd be happy to take any questions.
Yes, for sure.
Thank you for that presentation.
Just use your speaker button.
Oh, that didn't work. What's the meeting? Anyway, so we've heard that, you know, many people will ask us, well, why don't we just remove them and relocate them? And we've been told in the city that I'm from that they'll produce more to offset those that they've lost. Is there an issue? Is that true, or what's the rationale for not necessarily relocating them?
That's right. So when they are locally suppressed, they can increase their reproduction. So I'll try to give a good hypothetical example. If all the coyotes in Clearwater are removed, like, let's say a trapper comes in or a disease comes in and wipes them out, all of a sudden, the coyotes in Largo will start increasing their reproductive output, because now there's food and space available in Clearwater where there wasn't food and space before. So their reproductive output will increase. You'll have just as many coyotes in a few years than you had before. Relocation really isn't the answer, and there's really nowhere in the state of Florida. You can take a coyote now where another coyote doesn't exist.
Okay.
So you talked about hazing. What exactly do you do when you're confronting a coyote?
Yeah, that's a great question. I forgot to answer that, so thank you. Hazing a coyote is basically giving it some negative attention, letting it know that it's not welcome in the area. With On Top of the World, all I did was walk towards it and yell at him, and that was enough to get him to move. We actually created a video. It's on our website. It's about three minutes on how to haze coyotes. That entire video footage was taken in On Top of the World. There are other things that residents can do besides yelling at them. They can use an air horn, they can throw rocks at them, they can use a car horn, they can really do whatever it takes to make the animal feel uncomfortable enough to where it leaves the area and yields from human presence.
Other questions? Yes? Don't they usually run in packs, though?
Yes and no. They are territorial, so when you see more than one coyote together, you're looking at them with their family group. So you're looking at the alpha male and female with their young of the year. And yes, they absolutely will travel together when they have young and teach them how to hunt. And on Top of the World, particular days, when we were out there, we saw three together. My understanding was, it was February, so I think what we were looking at there was an alpha male and female, one of their offspring from the previous year that had hung back to help them raise pups from the coming year. But yes, they will move together. Most of the time when people see them, it's one, but you can see more than one together.
They must be having a lot of babies in my area, because we see them in multiples, you know, groups. What? Six at a time. Yeah. Commissioner Welch.
You actually asked my question about hazing.
Oh, okay. Sorry. I don't see you. I know. I'm on the presentation, and it doesn't show.
Right. Do it from there.
May I? Yes, you may. We're trying to electronically do everything now, so that's why we're poking a little funny at me. Anyway, what about feral cats?
As in, are they attractive to coyotes? Yes, feral cats are attractive to coyotes, not just the cats. It's also the food that's attractive to coyotes. So what we're finding is typically the food that's left for them, left for the cats, brings the coyotes in, and then the coyotes take advantage of the cats that are also there. So it's a huge draw, not just for coyotes, but for raccoons and other wildlife in the area, absolutely.
So do, I mean, how about killing coyotes, killing the cats?
They do kill the cats, yes. They will consume the cat food, and they will kill the feral cats as well.
Okay. Right. Do you track those in any way, where the coyotes are versus feral cats?
You know, that's a good question. I am not tracking any coyote reports necessarily in Florida, other than where we're getting conflict calls. And I think if we were to look at Pinellas County, the map would probably be one big dot. I'm not familiar with where the feral cat colonies are in the county, but we do often hear from community cat caretakers who are reporting loss from the colonies of cats. One of the things we're trying to educate them on is not to leave food out indefinitely. That's usually the draw for coyotes. So we're trying, if they absolutely must feed the cats, we're suggesting they feed the cats at one time of day and not leave the food out. Once the cats are done eating, pick up the food and leave the area. That will give wildlife less opportunity to come in and take advantage of those foods that are left there. But yes, the underlying answer to your question is, yes, they are killing the feral cats.
Okay. All right, thank you. Okay.
Commissioner Seale.
Doug Brightwell, Animal Services. Just as a follow-up to that part, that's what we have in the ordinance for all wildlife eating. Feral cats that are in Pinellas County, they have a three-hour per 24-hour window that they can feed, and we recommend they do it at one time per day, and they have to remove the bowls and the food once the feeding time is up, just to minimize those nuisance issues.
Okay.
I did have a couple, ma'am, sure.
Yes.
Before you take off, I did have one for you, but...
Is it Angeline?
Yes, sir.
Thank you so much for the presentation.
Thank you.
What's the average size of an adult coyote?
Average weight is about 27 pounds in Florida.
Okay. Smaller than I thought.
Yeah, they look a lot larger than they are.
Compared to a German shepherd, it's like 80, 90?
Yes.
Okay. And so Doug, we get a call from a constituent, there's a coyote in their yard.
Yes, sir.
What do we tell them?
We fall back to a lot of the information we get from FWC, leave them alone, haze them, make them uncomfortable so they'll leave the yard. And we recommend people do yard checks to make sure that they don't have food, or fruit, or trash, or any of that that's attracting the coyotes.
So it's okay to tell them, go yell at the coyote? It's safe to do that.
Hey, we use the word hazing. You can yell at them, you can... A lot of people with dogs have the shake hands with the pennies in them that you use for dog nuisance issues.
A can with pennies in it?
It's just a can with pennies or rocks in it. It makes a noise, and that works well with the coyotes, too.
Okay.
A lot of dog owners will have that if they're trying to train their own dogs to get to deter bad behavior.
I missed that.
Thank you.
Well, thank you. That's very helpful. So all the information that you have presented here is on your website and apparently more.
Yes, we have a lot of information on coyotes on our website. I would say everything, with the exception of the On Top of the World information, is on there.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
I haven't seen it yet.
All right, next on the agenda is public comment. We have one card so far from David Ballard Geddes Jr.
Hi, good afternoon. David Ballard Geddes Jr., I live on Georgia Avenue in Palm Harbor. Not one measure, not one real effort to protect or conserve the remaining vital water supply from contamination. This government still today promotes the commercial use of pesticides that kills all the good things that live in the soil, further together poisoning our groundwater with fertilizers allows and creates. Our water supply is slowly becoming carcinogenic. Furthermore, this government still promotes the destruction of our God-given wetlands for the manufacturing of Cypress mulch, knowing good and well that our wetlands serve as the liver of the earth, and our wetlands are vital to the filtration and percolation of our water supply. Reducing our wetlands to thistles is an act of abomination. Even further, the lack of proper recycling of our garbage has caused our landfills to be filled with more contaminants than the world has ever known. The waste this government should have responsibly recycled and did not will continue to ruin our water supply for generations, coupled with the direct injecting of reclaimed water, disposing of our fecal waste directly into the aquifer, and the long-term nitrate burden associated with temporarily-treated chlorinated fecal nitrates anaerobically introduced into our aquifer, bringing even further ruin, simultaneously aiding and abetting a third-party, eminent domain-taking of civilian-owned property using the reclaimed water variance application under Statute 150 303, Section 5, staging us, setting us up on a water crisis that has and is still in the works, built up on a legislative act of fee simple title usurpative bullwork perniciously, rebelliously taking property, liberty, and life of the Gentiles, claimed as process due under the Fourteenth Amendment qualifies this government not as government, but as an adversary seen as an actual invading force here to destroy the lives of our people, as written in the Declaration of Independence, thereby subjecting the legitimacy of all stakeholdings throughout this government. Understanding this, I feel now is the time we need to make some corrections and adjust our bearings so that we can move forward on a civilized footing. Thank you.
Thank you. Great. Okay. Next on the agenda is the consent agenda. Do we have anything that needs to be polled? Vote consent.
Seven.
Seven. Did it electronically.
And so did I.
Yeah, I didn't hear anything over there.
He wants to say it and push the button?
Say it and push it?
Because we just pushed the button.
Yeah.
I actually don't see you on the speaker list here.
No.
No, we made the motion. You motioned.
Well, I was on the speaker to make the motion.
You just said, "make the motion."
Yeah, we just wanted to do it as fast as we could. Okay, just hold on a second.
Mission side of the...
I was gonna say that, but, okay. Commissioner Eggers would like to say something, though.
No, Simply was gonna do what they did already, which is make the motion.
Okay, except, we'll back up for a second, because I should've said this before. Actually, I don't, when you have a thing down there that says...
Motion.
And now I can't see it. Current Speaker.
Because somebody's, I think, already made it.
Because, yeah, I don't... Okay, forget it, because I don't...
I don't know where the voting is.
You guys already did that, there's nothing up here for me to say that. Okay, never mind. Commissioner Justice, did you have something?
I wanted to poll number seven.
Yes, right. Okay, and Commissioner Long?
No, I just wanted to see if you'd recognize me.
I know who you are.
I know, just wanted to see if it worked. I'm practicing.
Okay, so that didn't work. You made the motion?
I made the motion.
She made the motion, I made the second.
Commissioner Seale made the motion. Commissioner Welch seconded.
I do have a question, though.
Okay.
So just going forward, do you want, when we make the motion, to do it verbally and push the button?
You're gonna have to do it verbally, because I'm not seeing anything that tells me that you did it.
Just verbally.
So we're not pushing buttons today?
To vote.
Unless they get it fixed over there, no.
Okay.
Okay. Which is fine. Okay. All right. I think we'll take the voting. Oh, there. Okay, so how... Did you just do something different, or did you enter those by hand?
They were entered by the...
I think once we hit motion, it changes what you see. Yeah.
Yeah, I don't see anything. Okay. All right.
But there's nothing there that says somebody made the motion.
Well, I'm supposed to see what came up right before that, so...
We can try it off-session.
Yeah, we'll try it another time. Okay, that...
Did you eventually see it?
Right bef... For half a second before the voting ballot came up.
So on the next one, we will record the motion and second it, see if we get the message before going to the votes.
We'll try it one more time. Okay. That was unanimous. Item seven.
Item seven is a ranking of firms in an agreement with Stantic Consulting for conceptual facility planning and real estate financial consulting services. Um, as we have discussed, we have approximately 31 entities, 15 county administrative departments, constitutional officers appointing authorities and agencies, over 1.4 million square feet. Um, and this will look at all of our space currently, what our planned needs are, and then begin to do financial analysis, um, to determine what type of space we can plan for in the future. Uh, this will not just look at how many square feet, but the synergies between offices, you know? So should our financial, you know, office be, you know, connected to this, or should our permit functions be in a central location versus a five different locations? Or do we need a north and a south county to service our customers for functions? So it'll look at various pieces like that and come back with facility planning recommendations that we can use then for the next decade.
So do you have questions, Matt?
Yes, Madam Chair.
Would you, uh, push your button? Thank you. Commissioner Justice?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, and I apologize for not going into more depth on Thursday. I started to dig into the scope of work and everything. I just had a couple of questions.
Uh huh.
One, are we limiting the site selection to Clearwater, downtown Clearwater? I noticed in there it said county seat, but we've had reports that we, you know, what functions have to remain in the county seat, what don't? Um, and then I was interested in some of the properties that were excluded, because we talked about, and one of the scope of work had talked about the functions at 324 with the historic courthouse, but then it is not mentioned in one of the sites included for evaluation. Um, and also, we excluded the site that we own on Olmerton Road with the fleet maintenance building, the property. So I was just kind of trying to get a feel for why we made some of those decisions about what properties we were going to evaluate and not, and the functions in the historic courthouse versus, so anyway, I just want to get some more clarity on that.
So the location, the location decisions ought to come at a later date, because first I need to understand the array of services. For instance, when we have a central county administrator, commissioner of functions, that may have security associated with it. When we have human services, we would not want necessarily that to be in the same building, people being comfortable coming into a central government facility, or maybe a permit center, um, would, you know, you'd want that as a standalone. So cert, so first, we have to determine the types of functions that we provide, what types of facilities would service those functions. Then we can talk about location.
So, well, that goes, my second question would be, are we, are we going to have decision points throughout the process, or is this going to come back and give us 38 different options? And I guess the question is, I don't want us to have a report come back to us in a year that we've spent a lot of time and resources on, that is limited in evaluating our potential, I guess.
A little bit hard to explain, because I don't know where they're going to go with that, right? Um, but I think the, it's got to be an iterative process to working with you, um, but I think some of that will be determined on what types of locations. Certainly, uh, locations of sites will be a big consideration, but part of that would go into understanding where they would recommend best to locate that to serve the customer needs, and that may be different for different types of sites. Certainly, there's a piece that involves being in the county seat for the central administrative functions, um, but that doesn't, you know, that doesn't preclude that, but there would be other steps involved if that was a decision we made.
So I guess, uh, my, then my question would be, if, if they've determined we need X thousand square feet in these three sites, three different, or could be potentially three different sites with constitutionals, the permitting and the administrative functions, and they're looking at real estate values, and they're, all of those kind of things I see in the scope of work, are they, are they going to evaluate countywide about the site potentials for those different services?
I think that'd be left to our direction on how we want them to proceed in those particular areas.
So they're going to be, they're going to be, uh, having those conversations with you and your staff throughout the whole process as far as...
Right.
You understand what I'm saying? I don't want it to come back and say, here's your three, here's the best recommendation, and then we find out, well, there was a site in, just across the city line in Largo that we really should have looked at. That's, I guess that's, you know, I know when our choice is limited down the road.
No, I thi, I think it's going to provide a, an array of, um, options for us. So, you know, I see this, at the end of this, it may take us 10 years, you know, to build that out, but currently, in a particular area, it says, I want to renovate this building, and I go, well, I don't even know if, if that's a good investment, because should we really not renovate, but co-locate functions and have, have better customer service? And so this would give us a planning tool to be able to make some of those follow-on decisions, um, based upon all those different factors that go into it.
All right. I just, I mean, I fully support doing this. We did, it's long overdue. I just want to make sure that when they come back with a report and they give us, we're going on the options they've offered us, and it's limited. That's, that's my only concern in the whole process.
I understand.
Well, and I guess I want to go back to your original question, why aren't all the properties involved?
Well, I didn't know about, I knew about the parks, I didn't know about the, um, the facilities, um, or the, the fleet. Parks is, we're going to be looking at that campus, um, because we have different, um, tenants on that campus, so that would be a separate review that we're going to do for the parks area.
If it was determined that permitting the most activity was around Olmerton Road, it would be interesting, you know, if we're just kind of doing a blank slate evaluation here.
Uh, and I, I think, I think permitting is a, is a particular one where we're going to have to understand customer needs.
Right.
That's one that's going to be very customer-driven, uh, where our customer's coming from. Um, and so I think that would have less limiting factor on location than, let's say, this building, this building, if you said you want to go, you know, outside of Clearwater, that would require, um, a different, um, pathway to get there.
All right. Yes, please.
Joe Lo, Administrative Services. Fleet is actually item 22 on the billings we are going to look at. It's 9685 Olmerton Road, it is actually included in the study. Fleet, Fleet Management.
I thought I saw it listed as an excluded property.
Was it parks you were looking at?
I think it was originally.
Yeah? Okay.
Then in regards, Andrew Pupke, Facilities and Real Property, Division Director, Administrative Services. For 324 for the courthouse, our rationale there was if the court's functions moved from this campus, including the court functions within this building, that building would still remain, because it is a historic building, but we would have to take into account the court functions that currently reside there.
Right, and I did, and maybe it was in the document, not the original scope of work, but I thought I saw 324, the functions there, but as far as the actual building, it wasn't listed as far as the other, like, this was designated 315 and the one up on Fort Harrison, but that one was not designated in the original scope of work that I was looking at.
Right, so quite likely, as I mentioned, that building would remain, those other two buildings, you mentioned 315, this building, and the annex would go away, but that building, because of its historic significance, would stay.
But the functions could potentially change in that building.
They could.
I mean, if, if we, if we had a new court facility somewhere in North County...
Correct.
It's only got four courtrooms, really only two judges that are using it, that you could move them, those judges and those functions somewhere else and put something completely different in the historic courthouse.
Exactly. And then as far as the other departments or campuses, we have other activities that are going on at those locations, such as the Public Works Campus. We have a master plan consideration for that. Uh, we didn't look at emergency management, because they're in the public safety campus already. Uh, we have the GMD locations for utilities not included, because they are separate, and then they're generally related to the plant functions. We are looking at 14 South Fort Harrison, the functions that both utilities and the other entities have in that building. Solid waste, because it again is unto itself and operates singularly for that purpose, was not considered as part of this. And then we did not include the airport, because again, they're doing their own master planning at the airport as well.
Commissioner Eggers?
Well, yeah, I thank you for pulling this, Commissioner Justice. Um, yeah, I think this is a really complicated, um, process. Um, and it's certainly, obviously, understanding the inventory of real estate and buildings that we have, we already have that information. I'm assuming these folks ultimately will be intimately familiar with that, because as we decide, as we discuss with commission, um, policies that dictate some of it, uh, talk to our residents and our contractors and get input from the public, that's going to get thrown in the mix. So I would imagine that there's going to be a, a pretty, uh, hope, robust, interactive process with the public, with staff, your, your, all your different sta, and us. So there's, that's going to be ongoing.
Yes.
As you start to pull all this together. And then talking about the, the piece about using the properties that we have in some, in some capacity before we decide to dispose of a property, or how to renovate a property for a different use. Again, these are all, these are all extremely, you know, complicated and, but I think that we don't want to get too far down the road before we start looking at stuff. I think it's an iterative process, I think, is really, so we can start to see where it's heading, and got to get a feel for it in, in some regards, and give some direction, and then funnel that back, so that we're not going down a path too far, and then we've wasted three years, and we're like, what? Wait, wait a minute, let's back up and, and go in a different direction. So I think that's going to be really important.
We discussed that previously with the administrator, and that's his been, his direction to us, so that's how we'll proceed with the study.
Okay.
Okay. Uh, Commissioner Welch?
Thank you, Madam Chair. The spreadsheet you're referring to that has all the buildings in square footage, do you have something like that that also has the current functions at those buildings?
I'm sure we can come up with a commission, it's not actually part of this, this scope of work, we can come up with...
If it's not a whole lot of work, I think that would add to understanding what's out there.
Yeah, absolutely.
And the building that's the second largest, 9685 Olmerton, is that?
That's Fleet.
That's Fleet?
That's a Fleet, that's Fleet, okay.
Yeah.
All right. Thank you.
Did you want, yes.
I pressed the button.
Again, right.
The, and so you can look at, for, the page that I was referencing is page 18 of 45 on the Section E scope of work, Section G exclusions-inclusions, and it talks include 315, 400, 440, 310, but doesn't mention 324, Fort Harrison, which is the old courthouse. And you would need to have those functions evaluated as part of the master plan. And then also, on page 19, at the end of that list, number 14 is exclude the Fleet Management locations. So that's where I got that information from as well.
Understood. And in some situations, we're also doing assessments of the buildings, and most of the, the situations, in fact, 324 would be an exception, because if that building is going to remain regardless, we wouldn't do a building assessment as we would here to determine whether this was, the best decision was to keep this building and renovate it or to build a new building.
Well, again, not to completely muddy it, but what if the determination, again, with those court functions, limited as they are, were to go somewhere else, and that you wanted to use that historic building for something else? Um, it, it could be an administration-commission facility, for example, just throw in, not starting something, just throwing something idea out there, that if you wanted to maintain a presence in downtown Clearwater, but the best place for permitting and everything else was eight blocks that way, or eight blocks that way...
Sure.
We would still have a presence, and it's still limited, but it wouldn't be limited to those just four courtrooms, and again, really just two judges and some magistrates that come there.
Right.
Um, again, I just don't want to limit us from thinking, what could be some really neat ideas out there for our space use and our functions?
Certainly, I understand your point. The reason it took us a long time to bring this back to you, because we've been talking about this for a very long time, is because we went back out, because we wanted this to be operational, not, you know, an architect. We wanted this to understand the functionality of the, of the space, and that we're building space around the way we want to operate, and, and the synergies necessary to maximize customer service, access, and efficiency. And so that took us longer and required us to come back out, and so that's the exact purpose of this study.
So then, one last question since, um, sorry, I'm channeling Commissioner Eggers today. So isn't that function, that evaluation is, and looking at real estate values is, you know, and let's say there is a boom in downtown Clearwater, similar to what's happening in downtown St. Pete in five years, and we're going through this process, it really would be best to sell three of the four buildings in downtown and move eight blocks east? That evaluation of the real estate values and everything will be taken into the process?
Absolutely.
Okay. Thank you.
Commissioner Welch?
Commissioner Eggers, when you were making appointments this November, I'm sure you remember that.
Absolutely. It's at the bottom of the list.
Just notice, um, that same sheet, just what's the reason that for 315 Court Street, there's a number above the line, and then also number 26, and the same thing with 501? Why are those broken out?
Subtotal.
Yeah, it's garages.
Hey, people.
Garage space.
Garages are the ones below the subtotal?
Yeah.
Okay. Thank you.
But even on your, even on your list, you can see, I mean, we own, you know, 528 Oak, it's a little house we have over here. We have little bits of houses from an efficiency standpoint. We really need to look at how we've kind of spread out over the years.
Okay. Any more questions? In our chain of...
Motion to approve.
Um, you can try using that.
Good.
Okay.
Get out before I do that.
Don't see it.
That's...
You're not, there's a second. I'm on it. Had to get out before you can say that.
Oh. Okay, mo, motion by Commissioner Eggers, second by Commissioner Welch, and we are ready. Okay. That is unanimous. Yeah. Item, um, where are we? What, 12? Yes.
Okay. Item 12 is the Second Amendment to the Maintenance and Management Agreement with Palm Harbor Community Services Agency for Palm Stansel Park. Again, this follows the commissioner's direction for maintenance agreements with these facilities.
Move approval? Oh. Motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Eggers. We're ready to vote. Yeah, look how easy that was. Thank you. I don't ever have to look at you guys again.
Wow.
Just kidding. Did you want to say something? I'm sorry.
Me?
Yeah, you have...
Not at all.
Okay, never mind. She doesn't want to speak. Item 13.
This is a grant award from the U.S. Department of Health and Human Services. Um, this is for the second budget year for a grant that provides mobile medical unit and bayside clinic for 2,951 homeless clients. Uh, this is $1.5 million. Total anticipated expenditure is $2.7 million.
Madam Chair, we still, would you give the commissioners to say a motion, their seconding, as opposed to only pressing the button, so that it gets on the visual and the verbal record?
So I made the motion, Madam Chair.
I made the second. Right.
Okay.
Um, doesn't she announce it? Does that count?
I'm sorry?
Because she announces it, that doesn't count for the verbal record?
My instruction, but yeah, that, that's how we have done it for years, so...
Okay, the problem, though, is that she announces that she moved, but he pressed his button first.
Right, which is why if they verbally say, I pressed the button, you know, I'm making a motion, then that, we have both of those on the record, and we can see why there's a match. Without the verbal...
But if there's not a...
If you, if you see, and electronically, and you can say, motion by, second by, and that creates your, your verbal record.
Well, that's what I did, though, or that's what I will do.
Okay.
See, I ignored her when she said, I moved, because she hadn't pressed her button, right? So, okay, is that what I'm supposed to do?
That's enough, though. It's like, you gotta...
Okay. And they don't need to announce, do they need to announce, Norm?
If you at least announce.
I will announce before we get the voting thing up.
Right, then we'll record that as the record, what you announce.
That's what I was hoping for, yes, thank you. Okay.
Question real quick, I think in addition to that, I think it's important that we, we say it because I may be making a motion to deny. So it's not just a motion to accept, so.
Because we don't have that.
So if I push the button, I say, I moved to deny. So, I'm not in this case, I'm just saying, in general. So I think it's important that whoever's making the motion also verbalizes what it is they're motioning, so.
Yeah, but it's still not going to coincide with that then, so is there a way to fix that or do we just scrap the whole darn thing?
If someone were to make a motion to deny, we can.
I know, you can change it.
Make a motion to deny here before we get to the floor.
Usually it's you.
I haven't seen it in action.
Thank you.
But how do you know who?
Do you want to practice this off slide?
Yeah, I hear you. I thought we had it all worked out.
I thought so too.
Sure. Let's just do verbal motions for now, we'll talk about this later. Okay, for this one, we have a motion by Commissioner Welch, second by Commissioner Peters, and we're ready. That is unanimous. Item 14.
This is a resolution affirming the policies of the Pinellas County Conference of Plan, including the East Lake overlay that restricts density to the north portion of this area to .5 units per acre and formally requesting the Pinellas County, or the Pinellas Planning Council to add a residential rural, which is .5 units per acre land use map category to the countywide plan rules.
Motion to approve.
Second.
We have a motion by Commissioner Eggers, second by Commissioner Welch. Do we have any comments, questions? All right, we're ready to vote. Okay, that is unanimous. Item 15.
This request approval of a county incentive grant program agreement with Florida Department of Transportation for construction of an ATMS system on 49th Street. The department agrees to fund a maximum of 1.5 million dollars, which is 50% of the estimated cost.
Move to approve. I'm sorry. Peter's, did you move?
Seal.
Oh, Commissioner Seal. Moved by Commissioner Seal, seconded by Commissioner Long. I have a question, though. Which is County Road 611.
49th Street.
49th Street.
49th Street doesn't go. Oh, yes, it does, never mind.
All the way, connects all the way.
All the way, never mind.
I've driven every inch of it many times.
Never mind. All right, we're ready then. Somebody missing, thank you. All right, that is unanimous. Item 16.
This is a Florida Department of Environmental Protection Grant subrecipient agreement between the county and the city of Deneen for funding for the lofty pine septic to sewer project in unincorporated Pinellas County. This grant funds $500,000 with no county match. The county act will act as a pass through for the grant, which will provide sanitary sewer collection for 120 residents. The city will contribute 1.6 million dollars towards the project.
Move approval.
Second.
Okay, we have a motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Justice, and we're ready. That is unanimous. Item 17.
This is the matching grant, the, the first one was between the county and the city and this is between us and the Florida Department of Environmental Protection.
Second.
There we have a motion from Commissioner Peters, second from Commissioner Justice, and we are ready to vote. Somebody's missing. Okay, that is unanimous. Oh, oops. Item 18, sorry.
This is the First Amendment to an agreement with coronary companies for the design build services for the new headworks and grit removal facility at the cross, at the South Cross Bay Water Reclamation Facility. As part of the first phase, there was a 2.4 million dollar design and the second phase is the construction of 2.4 million, bringing the project total to just over 27 million dollars.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Welch, we have a question.
Yeah, I hit the button just for the record.
Oh, sorry.
No, I just wanted to, this is, this is a big dollar amount, so I'm assuming that in the proposal that we saw last week that showed wastewater rates increasing significantly and water rates not significantly, part of that reason was this continued commitment to capital at this location among others.
That's correct, Ivy, go ahead.
Hi, I don't, I don't know if you opened up here and you wanted to address that as well, but I'm Ivy Drexler, I'm the plant manager for South Cross Valley Facility, and I'm here to stand in for Megan Ross for today, so if you could repeat your question now.
So last week we talked about our wastewater rates going up significantly over the next three years, I think it's 9% a year. I'm assuming it's because of a heavy capital investment in the wastewater arena and it includes things like this, but I didn't know if this was part of that package.
It was part of that package. Rahim is, is certainly here, I think it's probably outside of your wheelhouse, but, but that's absolutely part of the capital program and the, and the reason for the rate increases.
I think that's important that we keep drawing that connection so that when we do come to the point of raising rates and people are scratching their heads, at least we've had that continued conversation about why.
Yeah, it was at, the rate was heavily cap, capital construction, environmental protection regulatory requirements.
Driven, I got it, thank you, thank you.
Thanks.
We're ready to take a vote. That is unanimous. Item 19.
Under 19, we are, I am requesting your approval of staff's recommendation in the confidential memorandum of today's date.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Welch. We're ready, questions? That is unanimous. Item 19.
Under item 20, we are asking your approval to initiate litigation. In this case, this is a matter that was investigated by your Office of Human Rights, the claim was housing discrimination.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Welch. And that is unanimous. Item 21.
Under item 21, we're requesting your approval to file suit in the referenced matter. This is a code enforcement matter involving some accumulation and trash and some other zoning violations.
Move approval.
Second.
Motion by Commissioner Peters, second by Commissioner Welch. That is unanimous. Do you have anything else?
I do not.
Okay, Mr. Commissioner? Administrator?
I have one report and I was very pleased Commissioner Gerard joined me on February the 17th for in-service day. On in-service day, there's a lot of training and things that go on that people don't see, but she got to witness firsthand as we visited different wastewater treatment and water treatment facilities of the emergency planning that they were doing to train up on if things happen. And people were literally exercising their operational plans, preparing for what happens in a hurricane, they were put into real life situations of, you had a, everything from being able to have power outages at lift stations and things like that to chlorine leaks because of hurricane, what do you do with the surrounding neighborhood? And all of the various emergency planning that goes into keeping our residents safe and our environment protected, those were exercised in the Utilities Department on February the 17th, our in-service day, and so I just wanted to report on what I thought was just a fantastic exercise, but really making, you know, real preparation work for disasters and making sure we're ready.
Yes, and you should feel good about what will happen when we have the next disaster, they are ready.
Go ahead.
Okay. Next on the agenda is appointment to the Taurus Development Council, I have ballots here that have your names on them, so please take the right one.
Oh, I don't know, I think I'll.
And you vote for one in either category, one in either category. Should have got some extra ones, I suppose. Right, thank you, that's ridiculous.
Not yet, I wanted to look at one picture. Okay.
Just waiting for Commissioner Welch.
Yeah, that's the right one, it is, thanks.
Okay. While we tabulate those, we have them all, we have any new business items from the commission?
I do have one item, Madam Chair.
Sir.
Well, two. I want to thank Commissioner Justice for joining me at the Urban League Whitney Young, Whitney M. Young Empowerment Luncheon last Friday. I want to congratulate Carol Alexander from the Next Step Pregnancy Center, Gina Proquet from Academy Prep, and Lorna Taylor for being recognized for their community service and their work for diversity. I also wanted to mention that in two weeks, the U.S. Census will start to send out notifications in the mail. Again, our staff has done a killer job, there's some new flyers that'll be going out, they've actually got a new link to the website. So just want to remind folks that the census will ask for the number of people at your address, name, sex, age, and race, ethnicity of people in your home, and will ask if you own or rent. The census will not ask for your social security number, it will not ask your citizenship status, and the census will not come from any political party, it will not say Republican or Democrat on anything that you get about the census. So just want folks to be aware that that is coming. For more information, you can go to our new link, www.panelis census.org, and hope everyone will participate and make Pinellas count.
A question about census, will they still have, like, a certain percentage of people do a longer form?
Yeah, I don't know the answer to that, but we'll get the answer to that for you.
Yes.
Just real quick, I just wanted to say to those who were there, that you all know already, but there's several others that didn't go to the Blue Jays opening day yesterday and it was a, it was really a magnificent day, they did a great job with the stadium and the day was beautiful and it was full and there's a lot of energy. I think as importantly, the, when we did the deal with the Blue Jays originally, they, they were 25% investor in the deal, but there was also the possibility of going over on their, their construction costs and we knew that. And it was all going to fall on the Jays. So just so everybody knows that in the end, the Blue Jays are probably the largest contributor of funds with about 43 million dollars of the now 102 million dollar project. Ours didn't change from the original and the counties and the cities did not change, but I thought it was really important to just let folks know that the Jays are there at the table probably for between 40 and 45% of the, of the deal, which is really a good thing and probably something that should be a, a, a good, a good example for others. The only other thing I was going to say is that a gentleman by the name of Jerry Cusson, who we all know and love, is very involved in so many different things, leading Memorial Day services at Curlew Hills and Veterans Day services, now he's involved with the Veterans Engagement Board and all over the manufacturing industry and working with Oldsmar, the City of Oldsmar and the Chamber there. He had, they had a retirement party for him last night and it was just really well attended, probably, I don't know, 100, 100-plus people that were in attendance and saying some really nice things. As it turns out, he's officially retiring, but he's going to be very involved in probably just as many things, manufacturing, he's going to be involved with Congressman Bill Arrakis's office, he's going to be involved in, still with different aspects of the Veterans Engagement Board, so he's still going to be very busy, but probably just in a little different role and we just wanted to wish him all the happiness and good luck in the next phase. That's all I have, thank you.
I wanted to thank Commissioner Eggers for saving me from throwing out the first pitch.
Which, I mean, you would have done just.
No, I wouldn't.
You would have done just fine.
Not willing to find out again, thank you.
Stacked up against the mayor, you would have been fine.
So anybody else? Yes.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I just wanted to share.
Nothing.
I just wanted to share with all of you that I had an opportunity to tour the Seminole dredge today, this morning, and if you haven't been out there and seen it up close and personal, it is pretty remarkable what they're doing, how much they're doing, and I learned some new terms today, which I just am going to love talking to people about, because we were able to see the polishing of the water and how it comes from the bottom of the lake and goes through this whole system, and then you have polished water and it's just the most lovely, beautiful, gurgling little brook, like you'd see up north or out west somewhere with rocks and the water is so clean and pure and I just got the biggest kick out of that. Secondly, we were able to go on the dredge barge and I had just such a neat time talking to this young man who I couldn't help but say to him, how old are you? And he was 18. Today was his first day at work and I said, oh my goodness, bless your little heart, what on earth would cause you to be interested in this kind of work? And he said, my dad, because I'm having to save my money to pay for college. I just thought that was such a neat little story. And then the other person that I spoke with when we got out by the burn took us into this, I don't know what you call it, but anyway, they had a computer in there where they're monitoring on the computer every single thing that's going on and how fast it's going on and how much it's doing and all of the polymers and stuff that are going in the water. And I said to that young man, well, how did you come to be doing what you're doing here today? And he talked about how he was with the company for five years, but he had become an engineering tech. This reminded me of that presentation we had from Dr. Williams from the college about all the different certifications they had there and how he is now working his way into becoming an engineer by the work that he's doing there. And I just thought, I've got to tell all my colleagues, this is such a great opportunity for young people to work on things that they never could have ever dreamed about. And it's just, it's, it made me so proud that Pinellas County is so ahead of the curve in terms of the technology and the newest and greatest things that are going on to do this kind of work. And it is amazing when you get up on top of that burn, I don't know when the last time was that you were out there, but even Kelly was astounded at how much more they had taken out of the bottom of the lake. And it reminds you, when you look at it, for those of you who've been down to the reservoir for Tampa Bay water, looks just like that, it's unbelievable. Anyway, that's my story and I just thought I'd share. Thank you, thank you, Madam Chair. Oh, and one more thing, I'd like to extend congratulations to Tim Nickens at the St. Pete Times on his retirement, and I think we're all probably going to really miss his thoughtful and wise editorials that he writes every day, so anyway, that's the end of my whatever story today.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Do we have a verdict?
Yes, we do, we have five votes for Mike Williams, one vote for Laura T. Hine, and one vote for Alan P. Johnson.
Okay, thank you. And Mr. Williams is the gentleman from Innisburg. Yes.
I had one other quick follow-up.
Go for it.
Our elite marketing team already has the answer to your question, so everyone will get the same form for the census. There, there is a long form called the American Community Survey that comes out in between the census, but that's a long form you're thinking about. The other thing that I forgot to mention, I wanted to give kudos to Jade Bradley of the Urban League Young Professionals, they did an outstanding video on the census that played at the luncheon last Friday, and I'm going to share that on my social media as well, so I just wanted to thank Jade for her great work. Thank you.
We should all share it as well.
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Well, maybe you should bring it here and show.
I didn't want Jewel to start asking questions about it, so.
Okay.
We'll send it to her first.
All right.
All right.
Fine. Okay, that was Commissioner Welch, there's nobody else on the, okay, we are adjourned for.
Three hours.
Almost three hours.